Alright, I call to order the regular committee of the whole meeting of Wednesday, April 9th, 2025. We're gonna read our line of acknowledgements, technically a different meeting. So, um, we would like to acknowledge that we are gathered on the Treaty 8 First Nations territory and the longstanding presence of the elders and the ancestors of Treaty 8. And through this acknowledgement, we extend recognition and respect to the B.C. Treaty 8 First Nations and all those who call the Peace Country home. Moving on to item number three, adoption of agenda. Uh, council adopts the April 9th Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda as presented. Can I get a secondary? Seconded by Councillor Johnston, thank you. Any discussion regarding items on tonight's agenda? Councillor Ravel?
We're also striking 12.1 that consolidated municipal user and utility fee by law?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just, it's already pre-struck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pre-struck from the agenda. They just need a little bit longer to fine-tune it in all kinds of nuances.
Fair enough.
Okay, any other comments or concerns regarding tonight's agenda? All those in favor? Ah, that is carried. Wonderful. Moving on to adoption of the minutes. Uh, the council adopts the March 12th Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Can I get a secondary? Seconded by Councillor Johnston, thank you. Discussion regarding the minutes? Councillor Ravel?
Um, as I was unable to attend that meeting and I was unable to observe it in person, I'll be voting in opposition to the meeting minutes since I was not there to observe it.
Solution.
Councillor Wall?
I have the same problem as Councillor Ravel with this. My solution is to motion to table these minutes to the following meeting.
Okay, can I get a secondary on tabling them? Seconded by Councillor Ravel, thank you. Alright, I'm, I think that's probably the best. If both don't feel prepared to vote your candidates to meet.
I was in favor of something I wasn't there for.
Then I think that's probably the best decision to make. So, thank you, Councillor Wall, for making that recommendation. Any discussion regarding tabling the minutes? All those in favor? And they are tabled. Perfect. Alright, introduction of late items, none. Public hearings, none. Delegation, none. Moving on to item number eight, unfinished business and business arising from the minutes. Uh, the council received the proposal for fully digital council proceedings through the provision of tablets for councillors in preparation for motion at the April 23rd, 2025 regular council meeting. Can I get a secondary? Seconded by Councillor Johnston. Discussion? Councillor Ravel?
Uh, so this had come out before and then we tabled it to bring it to this for the discussion. Now we've got some supporting documentation giving us kind of an understanding of what it's costing.
Yes.
Um, I personally looked through all the, uh, meeting minutes I've got. I've got two bankers' boxes worth. Um, so, she's a stack!
Oh, you're not wrong.
And I've been discussing with some other people about digital note taking. So, of course, I'm always in favor of the most cost-effective and efficient way to proceed. Um, however, in my opinion though, I want to find a balance because I have been assigned a council phone. But to add a tablet would be two devices? I'm wondering how we could potentially unify that or if we could opt out or something. I don't want the taxpayers paying for two device, two devices per person, right?
Yeah, well, you'll see from the invoice in front of us. This is sort of some of that supporting documentation. So, just for the month from February 26th to March 26th, we spent a total of $1,381.06 just on printing, um, of packages for that month. Um, the cost of the tablets is like literally... You can probably speak a little bit better on this, Mr. Sobolski, while I'm trying to find my spot. Um, so, we're looking at, at spending roughly around $3,000. If we're spending $1,300 a month, that's only like three months. That's it. So, within three months, we would have covered the cost of buying everybody tablets. It's that, it's like the printing is extremely expensive. Councillor Wall?
I have two questions.
Yes.
How much of the village, through, through your worship to decide? Um, how much of the printing the village does is for the council agenda packages? As a percentage?
Let me have that you speak on that one, Mr. Sobolski.
Uh, Councillor Wall, it's about 60 to 70% of monthly printing requirements go towards council proceedings. The other 30% goes towards administrative efforts and administrative requirements.
So, this bill will be completely?
No, it will be 70%.
Okay, and my, my second part of that question is, I see two meters on this bill here. I see meter one, which is $21, a meter two, which is $1,200. Uh, what is the difference between those two? And, yeah, basically, what's the difference between those two? Because if we can eliminate meter two...
It must be color. It's probably black and white versus color.
It was...
It's, it's color printing versus black and white or grayscale printing.
Well, this council remembers about two years ago, we had talked about moving away from color printing our agenda packages and moving to black and white. And what we had found is that when we were getting presentations or slideshows, we were not able to read them effectively because the black and white did not make them as readable as color did. And so, in the end, this council's decision was actually to go back to color because you guys were having a difficult time, well, all of us were having a difficult time reading the information that was being sent to us by third party. And because we do so much third-party stuff between the, the Peace River Regional District, between partners, if, we are getting a lot of those kind of presentation things. Not even including what we are getting on the governance end from, um, from UBCM and CLGA. And so, that's why we ended up having to go back to color. So, we've already tried eliminating color about two years ago and it made it so the agenda packages were more difficult to read. You remember? I know, we already tried eliminating color and it did not work out well. Yes, Councillor Wall?
I apologize for the third question when I said I had two.
No, that's fine.
Um, in regards to the tablets, I personally would still like a physical copy. Because I scribble all over them and I make my notes on them and things like that, which I'm not getting over. Yeah, that's true. Would it, if everybody, not everybody here, for example... How do I, how do I word this?
Different learning styles?
Yeah, different learning styles. So, let's say like four of us, for example, are totally okay with the tablets and totally okay with it online.
Mm-hmm.
Would it still be possible for me to get a physical copy?
Well, and then to, Mr. Sobolski, if we did that, having a tablet there for easy reading, we could still print it in black and, and white for, for councillors that would like to have the physical package. And we would still technically be saving quite a bit of money.
Yeah, we'd be saving about 90% of our, of our expenditures if we just printed the, the package in black and white for the respective councillor and then they could follow along on the digital proceedings if required for further detail or nuance.
That might be a meeting in the middle, gentlemen. Yes.
I also, if we did have it digitally, I wouldn't need all of the information in there as well, right? I could, I could have the information on the tablet and basically have the minutes and the agenda like four or five pages on paper.
Yeah. Okay. And that, like, that would also work out really, really well. Um, and then too, yeah, like, as, as, as long as you can see the, the digital copy, it'll be easy reading and then you can still get like the paper version. Like, whether or not I'm on my laptop, I do always like to have the main, the main agenda pages here so I can kind of write on them and say like who seconded what or who, what's been, you know, tabled and stuff. So, it, it, it would still lead to significant cost saves. Yeah.
Yeah.
Councillor Ravel?
Um, well, three things. Yes, admittedly, most of what I'm writing on, that's why I pull the agenda off immediately is because that's what I'm scribbling on most of the time. I do make notes in between. I wouldn't, so, there's a couple of things. I think we should maybe try it out before, well, no. The problem is if you're wanting to purchase something, you've got to make a decision.
Yeah.
But what I'm thinking in my mind is, I own my own laptop, you know? I don't know what software would be required because I already have, you know, a PDF reader and whatnot. That's free and, you know? And if it can be translated into, you know, a Word-like document, right? If a person already has their own device, like, I don't need a tablet. I've got a laptop and that's on me to bring it in and be prepared, right? So, I'd rather try a middle ground where I don't even want a lap, I don't want a tablet. I don't want, you know, the taxpayers to have to pay for that. If we want to trial going paperless or reducing paper, you know, I'd be willing to bring in my own laptop. So, what I'm getting at is though flexibility. If a councillor really wants paper, they should be able to have paper. If a councillor wants to bring in their own device and if there's some sort of software that's required to support that, that would be helpful from the village, like, you know, Office 365 or Adobe or whatever. Um, but then there's this third run where it's these tablets. Firstly, I don't want a tablet. I, if we're going digital, I'll just use my own laptop. You goes, don't have to buy me anything.
Just before you carry on with that, you must remember, if you're going to be using your own devices and you put village information on those and at any point in time, somebody files a freedom of information, your laptop must be given up.
Oh my gosh.
I have that too. So, I use my personal laptop, but I only use it for work. This is my work laptop. So, if at any point in time, somebody requests a freedom of information against me, I would have to give them my laptop. I'm totally aware of that. I know that and I understand that. You must understand that going forward. So, whatever you have, your laptop, if it's a personal laptop, you are not going to want to use it for village information because at any point in time, it can be requested by, by the courts and must be turned over immediately.
It puts a person in an awkward spot.
It does. So, that's why having the separate tablets does make the most, to make the most sense. That's why we also all have separate phones.
Yes.
The reason you have a separate phone is at any point in time, a court could request that you hand it over.
Yeah.
Same thing with your laptop. So, you would need to be prepared. So, that's why the tablets, um, really give the opportunity for council members to save money by moving to the digital format, but also don't put you at risk of, of violating any of your personal items as well.
Jesus, please.
Yeah. Councillor Wall?
Double sorry, I have another question.
No, please.
So, in regards to these tablets, I'm not 100% on board. There's, there's something in my mind that says, how can an electronic device be cheaper than a sheet of paper? I don't know if it's just my brain, but if we could find other uses for these tablets as well. I have heard in the past, not recently, but I have heard in the past, concerns from members of the public regarding when they watch the meetings online, sometimes it's hard to hear people. So, if we potentially had a tablet in front of us that they could see our vote, if we could vote on those tablets, digital voting, they could see our voting record. And if we had a microphone in that tablet, then people, we could press a button and people could, it'd be right into the audio. I don't know if that's a possibility. It's just something I'm, I'm, it's just a thought.
Councillor, it is a possibility. We can definitely get a digital software package for, uh, voting records to be recorded. Uh, but unfortunately, that does come with an additional associated cost. So, I'd have to get a little bit of research done and look out at, you know, um, eScribe and some of the different platforms that do offer this solution and see what the price point looks like.
Okay.
It would inflate the cost of, of our onboarding of the tablet proposal, probably about 15% to 20%.
Perfect. I'm, my concern is it's difficult for me anyways. I mean, I'm not the only one here, so it's up to everyone. But it's difficult for me to justify buying, basically, computers just so we eliminate paper. But if we can multitask with it and make it easier for members of the public to hear our proceedings online and see our voting records and, and whatnot, we can kill two birds with one stone, so to speak, right?
Well, just a reminder to...
That is correct. Oh, sorry, your worship, that is correct. And the goal also would be for all respective public officials to utilize these tablets as part of their council portfolio rules.
Oh, that would be, oh, so we'd have to, so they wouldn't just be staying here? Then I was under the impression they'd be staying...
Well, I would know.
They would be staying here, but when there's, when there is meetings that require inter-agency participation, you would be allowed to utilize the tablets, say, in those, those practices. And then bring it back to the village office.
I can't make a motion to direct staff, can I?
Uh, what are you looking to direct them to, to do?
To look into the software. I, I want to see what...
The voting software?
The voting software or the microphone aspect of it, just have that looked into?
Is that something you would be, in be interested in bringing to the, to the, the regular council meeting? Like, if they can bring in that, that supporting? Or would, would you want that to the next month's committee of the whole?
Oh, the regular meeting's fine. Because when we make our decision, that could be a, and, for, for me anyways, I'm just speaking for myself on this.
Yeah.
I would be more supportive of the tablets if we could use them for multiple, I mean, things, right?
Yeah. Mr. Schabro, I see you have something you'd like to add?
Sure. Um, and, you know, excuse me if it's inappropriate to add, uh, a little background on privacy and, uh, bringing your own devices to work. Uh, a lot of the work that's done in council, some of it is confidential. Um, and when you are bringing in your own device with confidential data, that comes with a different legislative requirement. And that's why even businesses, um, and our government organizations that were going towards bring your own device to work, they still do it, but they put on all sorts of requirements. For example, when I was working with Fort Northern Health, if you had your own phone to use it as a northern, instead of a Northern Health phone, you could not have certain apps on it, like TikTok could, would be a prohibited app. So, in all reality, when you are in the public sphere and you are bringing your own device, there is other legislative requirements that you have to, that you have to comply with unless you're logging into an organization through a VPN process. And that also has its own, um, price tags that, that go along with that. Um, so, in my experience in the past, whenever I have done a project like this, the cost and benefits are extremely well-defined where the electronic way of doing business, um, is a lot cheaper than actually using physical paper. I also want to remind council, um, that before, uh, Mr. Sobolski joined, I was doing some of the printing and all this kind of stuff. And that takes significant amount of office time.
Some of the budget?
The printing. That takes significant amount of office time. And that is a level of service that you need to be prepared to continue to fund because it's not a small item. It's actually quite a bigger item than, you know, we think. So, I would, I would really encourage council to, um, uh, continue to favorably look towards transitioning to these tablets uh, because I do think that it's going to stay, result to significant savings. And once people get used to it, I think you're going to find it more efficient and you're not going to want to go away from it. Like, if someone was to take it away from you, you would be like, no, 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 no. Not a lot, and I want this. It's so much easier to work with this.
Yes, Councillor Wall?
I have a motion. Tell me no if it's not the right time for a motion. Um, my motion is that council directs staff to bring information forward to the next regular council meeting or committee of the whole meeting when, or whenever they're available, really, uh, regarding audio on the tablets and digital voting software for further consideration.
To the next regular council meeting?
Or committee of the whole.
Or committee of the whole. Okay, can I get a secondary on that? Seconded by Councillor Ravel. Okay, that's a perfectly fine motion. It's definitely something that, you know, we've, we've run around pretty few, few times. Um, and, uh, I definitely like the idea of digital voting. Digital voting is what we, we do at the PRD table. I know it's really enhanced transparency. And, um, I know that, um, you know, we are eventually going to start looking into software to begin live streaming these meetings. And that would be really, really handy for that as well. That's where the digital voting, they really do go hand in, in hand. Where when you're live streaming, having digital voting is definitely best.
Um, for digital voting, of course, though, there are, you know, protections. Obviously, you're taking the vote in the room.
Yeah.
It's not relying purely on the digital voting. It's actually seeing who's voting this way and the other.
Yeah.
There are security measures and whatnot. There's ways to prevent interference and all that, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Councillor Wall?
Did someone second my motion?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, Councillor Ravel did.
Did you have a comment?
Mr. Sobolski, is that, um, is that motion good? You happy?
Absolutely, the motion is perfect. And I, uh, I've already done a little bit of legwork on this process so I can have that included for the next regular council meeting on April 23rd.
Wonderful. Okay, and your comment, Councillor? Oh, no, you've lost it.
I've lost it now.
I'm sorry.
I was supposed to have it.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, no, I had never...
Please.
When watching the PRD meetings online, which I'm crazy, so I do, some, some...
Yeah, every time I'm there.
I really, you know, it's a lot. I really, really appreciate the way that it, it shows on the screen, who's voted for what.
Yeah.
And I am aware, however, that if we were to go down that road, we would have to change our council procedure bylaw?
Eventually, yes.
Because it does require us to raise our hands or if attending via virtually, say aye.
Yes.
So, that, that would be something to change, which is, this was staff time.
Yeah.
On that, but I still think it's better of the wrong.
Yeah. No, exactly. I think that, that this could potentially lead to something that would be, it would be moving the village also into the 21st century, let's be honest. Which is not a bad thing. Right, yeah.
I think I could start in the 18th century.
Okay, perfect. Alright, well, I'm going to call, um, the question on the motion. All those in favor? And that is carried. Wonderful. I look forward to seeing what you've already been working on, Mr. Sobolski.
Absolutely, your worship, absolutely.
Um, and then back into the printing costs tablet thingies. Um, out of curiosity, I might have asked this last time, I don't remember, but it says total cost for seven councillors, but we would only need five or maybe for yourself because you already have, you know, a device, it'd be down to four.
Yeah.
So, we're, instead of 38, 50, would it be closer to the 27, 50 or even lower? If it's only four or five? Where's the seven councillor number coming from?
Well, I, um, I'm not too sure. Mr. Sobolski?
I want to cover administrative staff as well as one backup tablet.
Oh.
That's fine.
What you need.
Yes, yeah, it's always good to have a backup.
Yeah, you need to have, when you go electronic, you need to have some backup because if you don't and something goes wrong, then that becomes a problem. So, the backup is required.
Some of these people don't want my vote and you.
Okay.
I'm joking when I say that.
What were we seeking tonight? It's to actually proceed with purchasing of these tablets?
No, no, so we were really looking to, to just further that conversation and to, to give staff direction, which Councillor Wall did through his motion. And so, we've, we've met the threshold of why this was on there, so.
I am not an Android user, so I'll have to figure that out. But it would be, it would likely be through something like PDF and Adobe, right? Or...
Um, maybe separate software? I don't know the software, Mr. Sobolski, if you'd like to speak on that?
Absolutely. So, for regarding council packages, that would just be your Adobe OnSuite package. Um, and then regarding digital voting records and that software platform, that would be most likely through eScribe. They're the industry leader in municipal government voting platforms. So, um, again, this very qualified, um, vendors, backed up, um, liability included, all those considerations. So, we'll have more information for the 23rd.
And but at the end of the day, if we were to proceed with this and get tablets and stuff, we can still get it printed, but let's try it out kind of thing. But I also see the two devices thing. And not being able to utilize my own, I'm not able to save anybody anything, it feels like. It just feels more expensive to use electronic devices.
It does, but again, remember, we're currently spending roughly around $1,300 per month.
It's a lot.
We could pay for these tablets in three months.
Yeah.
Our printing, as, as, has been voiced by both staff members here, is excessive. It is a lot of printing. We have tried going with black and white in the past. It was not, it just did not work. We, we often had trouble reading slideshows that were presented to us, um, larger documentation that, that was coming that had a lot of graphics in it. It was coming out quite smudged. So, that's why we ended up going back to cover it in the first place. So, we, this is something that we've been talking about on and off the past couple of years. And I'm not surprised that we have finally reached this point. Most municipalities are going in this direction for the same reason. The cost is just astronomical.
Well, that was my next question. What's the industry standard?
Yeah, so, um, the majority have moved to, um, either they, they have screens directly on their, on their desks. I think Checkwin has screens directly on their, their desks that they vote on. Dawson Creek has screens directly on their desks. Tumblr Ridges, I don't know if there's our, our stationery on, on their desk, but they've all seen this too. So, it is definitely something we are seeing more and more of for this reason because the printing cost is not going down, it's only going up. Um, Mr. Schabro?
Uh, just, just one more thing, your worship. When we're talking about the cost, the cost, this, the, the cost that we're outlining, the $1,300 per month, is not considering what it's costing in staff time.
Yes.
Is just considering the, um, the cost of paper. There is an additional cost to it that's a soft cost that we absorb within the village office for actually doing the printing. So, I would encourage you to take a look at it from the perspective of not only the cost of doing business, which is the real, the, the, the very evident cost of the printing itself, but also the staff time cost within the village that, within the village office that actually has to manage that information in a paper format.
I have a thought to Mr. Schabro's point. Um, we did include in the, uh, proposal, uh, report that it is ballpark that our administrative labor costs just associated with printing are $2,000, $2,500 a year.
Bingo.
Councillor?
Be that as it may, I will reiterate that even if we go digital, I still want some form of agenda as a physical cost.
Well, I'm going to be asking for the same thing, the same reason. But it's just printing of...
So, we're only saving a lot of money, a whole lot of physical anyways.
We'll be saving a...
You will be saving a ton.
Because we're not going to be printing all the digital things. We're just going to be, keep printing the main agenda pages so we can mark them up for, for each agenda item, but we're not going to be printing this.
In council, members...
Agendas will still be presented physically via paper, but agenda packages will no longer be physically presented via paper if this motion does pass at the 23rd meeting.
Would it be possible, uh, for some items of those packages to be printed?
Upon request, if you...
Upon request, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm saying like, let's say there's some big project, we're doing whatever. I'm going to scribble all over it or, there's a bylaw. I, I really, really appreciate it when we're voting on bylaws. When it's in paper, uh, when I'm reading off of a laptop, I often miss things. I know that's not great to admit in public, but...
That's fair, though.
When, when it's on paper, I can read it and I can mark it and go, actually, no, I don't like this sentence and this is why, right? Where it's a little bit more difficult to be honest.
Councillor Ravel?
My last question, but a question in the public interest. For members of the public that attend the meeting, they will still be able to obtain a physical copy of the agenda for their reference to follow along and whatnot. Okay, so the public will not be impacted by this?
The PRD does the same, same thing. They always have paper copies and they're available for those who are in attendance. But all the voting and everything is done digitally for the directors. Yes.
Just on Councillor Ravel's comment there, I hope one day, that that's a problem we do end up having because that means we'll have people in this room.
Wouldn't that be lovely?
Yes.
It would be so lovely.
So, if you're watching this at home, come visit us during the meeting and that would be, that would be awesome.
We'd love to see you, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Any other discussion? Let's move on to core, uh, nothing for new business, we're going to move on to correspondence. 10.1s, may I once per minute?
Do we need a decision on this or?
We are, we're all good. Yep.
Oh, the council receive the invitation from the South Peace Primary Care Network to attend the South Peace Expo on May 1st, 2025 and that those members of council who are available be encouraged to attend in representation of the village of Pusku.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Ravel, thank you. Um, I will, I'm already attending this meeting, but the more the merrier. Um, I'm going to be attending kind of wearing both hats because we were also invited, I'm invited, wear under my director hat, the Peace River Regional District. Um, but I think that this is a great opportu- opportunity for as much representation from the village of Pusku as possible. Come out, meet people, learn about what's, what's going, what's going on and have those really great co- um, conversations. And just really, you know, bring, bring forward that supportive voice. You know, our, 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 our hospital staff and, um, many of, of those that are working within the South Peace Care are definitely going through a difficult time and so they'd probably love to see some happy faces. I am going to be there, but I'd love if others would come as well.
Um, I'm assuming there's no cost to attend, so any member of this body would be freely able to go and whatnot? And we've got representation through your mayor. But, um, this is good to see this primary care network coming to fruition where now we're ready to have a bunch of folks getting together and having these good conversations. Um, this is, of course, that project with the primary care network. To, my understanding is when folks don't have family doctors, they're able to go through this primary care network to still be able to get referrals to the services that require as this kind of stopgap while we're working to get more family doctors in community, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then this is it becoming a tangible reality?
Yes.
Lovely. Good to hear.
Yeah. Exciting stuff. So, can any of you gentlemen make it? No pressure, just all the pressure.
Yes, I sure would have.
Perfect. Yes. It is from 4 to 7. It's at the Northern Lights College. And, uh, I look forward to seeing, seeing you guys there. I think it's going to be awesome. I'm excited. Okay. So, uh, Mr. Sobolski, do you want us to officially nominate anybody to attend? Or is it just really received for...
We'll have official, official nomination at the RSCM on the 23rd. Today was just informal discussion to see what availability could work for any of the elected officials.
Okay.
Can we not all attend? Sorry, I should raise my hand.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's up to discretion of the public body.
Yeah. So, um, sometimes if everybody can't make it, you sort of nominate that one person to kind of go and represent everybody, but if you can all make it, that's always even better.
I think we should all try to go meet the doctors and nurses that are, we are in desperate need of. And, uh, show our support.
Do you need to RSVP for this event, Mr. Sobolski?
No RSVP is required. It is an open forum and open, um, invitation style. And just one additional note is, uh, the Village of Puscoopie will have two delegation tables at this event. One, uh, table manned by Mr. Stavro, um, regarding the North Winds Wellness Center project and more information regarding that. And I'll be manning the other Village of Puscoopie table regarding aging of place programs, um, our trail network, our disc golf course, and all the cool recreation stuff that we have offering in the, in, in the area.
That's wonderful news. Awesome. I'm so.
We're excited about that. So, so make sure if we're there, come by and check out our tables.
Totally. Put on your big cheesy smiles. That's so exciting. I'm so glad that you managed to get us in as, as, as part of this. To you, Mr. Stavro, and Mr. Sobolski, and all the staff, because I know we all work as one giant team here. So that's phenomenal news. I'm so excited. We're gonna be very well represented. That's wonderful.
Absolutely.
It's good to hear the representation. Um, because there's no cost and no RSVP, and yourself, the mayor, have said that you'll be there to represent the village regardless, it sounds like it's good enough here. I'm not sure if this needs to carry forward to the next agenda, unless that's required. But I think we probably ascertained what we needed to from this.
What are you thinking?
We feel, if we feel comfortable that this discussion was, um, adequate to move forward to a motion and, and adopt a decision, we're, we are good to proceed.
Okay, well then, you know what? I'm gonna throw the motion on the floor that this invitation is extended to all of council and that we're hoping to be well represented there by members of the public body. I got a second there. Seconded by Counselor Wall. Any discussion regarding that? All those in favor?
Of receiving invitation?
Mm-hmm. And that's carried. Wonderful. Okay, perfect. Moving on to the Northern Development Initiative Trust. So recommend that council adopt a resolution to support the participation in the twenty twenty-five Northern Development Initiative Trust, NDIS Local Government Internship Program, and that the Village of Puscoopie commits to fulfilling all post-government responsibilities as required by NDIS, including financial contributions, mentorship, reporting, and full support of the intern placement. Can I get a second there?
I have a point of order.
Yes.
As this is a committee of the whole, these resolutions here and these recommendations appear to be, uh, financial commitments and moving business forwards. I, I believe this should be tabled to the regular council meeting.
Mr. Sobolski?
My response to that, Counselor Wallace, uh, this is actually an oversight on my part as an administrative requirement as part of the application. We've already had, I believe, three previous discussions regarding the support towards this NDIS, uh, local government internship application. So going off of that pre- previous precedent, one of those previous conversations, we are okay with motioning, uh, this resolution at the COTW today.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Wall?
I do feel uncomfortable being not at a regular council meeting and instead just at a committee meeting where we're not supposed to be moving business, uh, moving business forwards. Because there has been conversations in the past regarding committee of the whole meetings and, and motions that could be perceived as moving business forwards, uh, that have been stricken from agendas and, uh, conversations that were halted in that manner. So I, I just want to err on the side of caution that I'm not setting precedent that these committee meetings become council meetings.
Yes. Mr. Sobolski, is this time sensitive?
Uh, it is a time sensitive one, so we were trying to get this back to NDIS before April fifteenth.
Oh, okay, okay. So, um, my understanding is that due to the time sensitivity of this needed resolution, um, I think it would be in the best for this council to move, move forward with this, but I do understand your concern about this moving into regular council business. And so I do un- understand that your, your concern. It would definitely be something I will be very cautious of going forward. Um, for this one, I am hoping that we can move it forward just due to, to the time sensitivity. And that is something that myself and Mr. Sobolski will definitely take under recommendation going forward to, to make sure that this does not proceed to happen. Yes.
Uh, my next question, and I don't, I don't mean this in any ill manner at all, and I'm just going to ask, though. We did have just a special council meeting forty-five minutes ago. Is, is there a reason that this is on the committee of the whole agenda as opposed to the regular council or the special council agenda that we had?
Only reason of that is just an oversight on my administrative part. Um, I found out from the NDIS program advisor that they were still waiting on this resolution of support from our public body. Um, so in a perfect world, if I had a little bit more time, I would have fit that in on the special council meeting agenda, but unfortunately, uh, just through a slaps of oversight on my part, or a lapse of oversight on my part, it forced him laying out to the committee of the whole meeting agenda, just due to the fact that we've had preceding motions about supporting this program in previous RCMs and committee of the whole meetings. So, uh, again, apologies on my, my, my behalf there.
Thank you.
Um, can I move forward with getting that motion seconded?
Well, I seconded it to bring it to the floor.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, perfect. Well, there was a point of order which then solves the second date to deal with the point of order and then to move forward into the second. So are you still happy seconding the motion?
Well, I'm seconding it to bring it to the floor.
Perfect.
Because I'd like to discuss on the point of order, even though you're to rule on it, if you would grant me the privilege of making a comment regarding a point of order, which is very conventional.
Yeah, sure. It's, it's Texas here. Free, free for all. We're all writing over the decision later.
Well, if I may, does a committee of a whole meeting bar us from making a motion and moving business forward? Or just to clarify on that, as we've kind of just made a motion previously, I'm confused, sorry.
I did make a motion to request further information, but it's not making a decision. So when we were initially discussing what a committee of the whole is and what it does, and about those packages, it was very clear in that package to me that we could ask for more information or ask for things to come to a regular council meeting, but we could not make a decision. Right?
Um, Mr. Sobolski, would you have a comment that you would like to, to make at all regarding the discussion?
Um, I know just from previous experience and, um, the outline of committee of the whole meeting procedures, uh, it is designed so that we avoid these types of scenarios. But if we have had previous meetings of discussion and informal discussion on a subject matter, we are able to move forward with a motion as, uh, Counselor Rabel had just previously mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stavro?
Thank you. Um, I tend to agree with, uh, with that part. There is, it's, it's recognized that there's certain, that there needs to be a separation of, of powers in terms of what a committee of the whole does and what regular council does. The problem is that sometimes we are defined by very specific timelines. And in those definitions of those timelines, decisions have to be made in order for us to access certain funds, certain programs, and all sorts of things of that nature. So while it's not regular practice, it's sometimes what we have to do in order to move business forward. And, and, you know, in our reality, it doesn't set a precedence. All it does is that there is a recognition that sometimes we have to do things out of the ordinary. We still need to, we still need the votes to be able to move the program forward. So, you know, while it's not conventional, uh, like, uh, Mr. Sobolski said, it is an emergency or a more urgent type of situation that we must, we need to be able to move business forward.
Mr. Stavro?
Um, in a scenario such as this, I guess we have a couple of, well, there could be a few options. Can a committee of a whole make a decision like it's a council meeting to move business forward? Or should we table this item to have a special meeting so that we still meet this deadline? Or can it be deferred to the next available council meeting? Because then this, assuming that committee of the whole is purely for discussion. Does the committee of the whole have the power to make motion and move forward business?
If it's time sensitive, yes. Yeah. If it's, like, business does sometimes have to move forward. You can do it during committee of the whole. It's not generally something you do on a regular basis. But it can be done if you have time sensitive issues. Is that, that's my understanding of that, Mr. Sobolski.
Correct, and as long as the item isn't introduced and then motioned at that same meeting. If we had previous discussion on it, then we can make a, a motion and adoption on it.
Yes.
Um, and then I guess the two final pieces would be, um, is, does the concern lie with the amount of public notice? But it was an agenda item on public notice. And the other piece is, I, I s- would the committee charter prohibit the committee of the whole from ruling on a decision or making a decision? That can be enacted? I'm, I'm trying to figure this out. Are we barred from your decision?
The committee charter does not prohibit us from making a decision in the committee of the whole as long as we have prefaced this as a discussion that's happened in a previous meeting. If this is a new agenda item, we would not be able to make a decision on it. But the fact that this has already been a previous agenda item, I want to say in two committee of the wholes and then one regular council meeting, we are, um, unable to make, uh, action, or business action on this.
And then the two hypothetical options, um, do we need to transform this committee of a whole meeting into a regular council meeting? But then that would require a unanimous decision to waive notice, period? Or should we table this to, um, a, a special meeting?
We do not need to move this into a regular council meeting. We don't need to, we can move this business forward. As Mr. Sobolski has stated, the, the, the committee charter does not bar us from doing that. Yes, Counselor Wall?
Previous discussions at, at, it wasn't the last table, I think two or three committee of the whole meetings ago, we had a similar discussion where we waived notice to turn it into a special council meeting um, over the issue that we would be moving business forward. And the conversation that was had at the time, as far as I recollect it, was that we could not move business forward. So I have been told by staff now that we cannot move business forward during a committee of the whole, and now that we, because it's time crunch, we have to move business forward during a committee of the whole. So I'm curious, going forward, um, through you, mayor, to Mr. Sobolski, where exactly that lies? Because this is the second time that we've had this, and we've, we've done it differently before. We were told that we couldn't, and now we're saying that we can. So, um, I just want to make sure that we're, we're consistent in our practices.
Mr. Sobolski, you're on mute. Yeah, one.
Apologies, apologies. Um, Counselor, I don't know exactly which situation you're pertaining to, so I don't know if that was an activity that was on a previous agenda or not. Uh, if that was a first time, uh, inclusion of an agenda item, well, no, we wouldn't be able to move forward with that as a business item or a business decision. With this being an agenda item that's been on preceding council meetings on numerous occasions, we are enabled and we are authorized to move forward with making a decision here. But again, that's up to the discretion of the public body. We're just facing some barriers and time crunches in this situation, right? But I do believe in the previous situation, that may have been the first time that that agenda item that you were alluding to was presented, and that's most likely why it wasn't moved forward as a business item.
Mr. Sobolski, one, one solution to this might very well be that within the next three business days, well, by Monday the fourteenth, we have a special council meeting and we, we move it forward there. Because my only concern is, is I, I, I would be concerned about voting this on the floor and have it being defeated because then we will not be needing the requirement for the NDIS intern.
Correct.
Well, the program that we've signed up to, we've done interviews for, we've potentially committed to, if this were.
We've already hired an intern.
Exactly. So this is, this could potentially create quite a large liability risk for the Village of Puscoopie if this were to be defeated at this point in time, because that person could come back on us as well as NDIS. So my concern is actually putting this to a vote liability-wise for the Village of Puscoopie, and I'm beginning to wonder if we should actually just completely scrap this and put it on a special meeting that happens on Monday the fourteenth to have this happen in time for fifteen.
Um, ad hoc recommendation from administration would be this is a really critical situation, and I would follow that, that suggestion.
Okay. That is my si- my suggestion at this point in time, gentlemen. If this is defeated, you'll be opening the village up for li- for liabilities. If you do not feel you can afford on it, it must be moved to, to the Monday. I cannot stress that too now.
I would support a special meeting.
Okay. You, you as well?
Um, and that gives the proper, the public notice period.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Mr. Stavro?
Thank you, uh, your worship. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to mention is that whenever we call special meetings, we actually commit resources of the village. So the problem with calling special meetings, especially for something like this, that's already been discussed, already been talked about, in no reality from a legal standpoint, of you, because the village has already acted on it, it would be, and has committed to that contract, because we're already in that contractual relationship. At the end of the day, it is, you know, on one side, it's, it's a catch twenty-two. It's six on one side, half a dozen on the other. So whether we vote on it today or whether we vote on it at a special meeting, to be completely honest with you, from a legal perspective, it, that doesn't make much of a difference. Why? Because the village has already acted on it. So that is the problem that I see with us waiting until Monday. The other thing is, having a special meeting just for this one item, unless you guys have an agenda, I always discourage special meetings just for one of special meetings, just for one item. Number one, it's time crunch. Number two, it's time on your hands that you're spending resources on that you could be spending on something else. And number three, the staff time as well. So my suggestion would be, and my legal advice on this, is that based on the situation that we're on, lawfully, at this point, the village needs to move forward with this as soon as possible, rather than wrapping ourselves up in a procedure that really legally is not gonna make any difference.
Mr. Sobolski, what are the odds that the consolidated user fee schedule will be done by the Monday?
Oh, it'll be tight. It'll be very, very tight. Um, I still have to meet with staff, probably for one or two working meetings or working sessions on that. So our goal would be a special meeting before the twenty-third. We would need that additional week.
Um, it is very difficult because I'm not in a position where I can ask members of this public body how they run on voting. So what I'm going to do is I am going to put the recommendation on the floor that we move this to a special meeting from Monday, April fourteenth at seven PM. Um, um, and can I get a second there regarding moving it? Seconded by Counselor Wall. Because I'm unable to ask or direct any member of this public body on how to vote, I still need to put that recommendation out. So that is what I'm doing then, seconded by Counselor Wall. Any discussion regarding the special meeting on Monday at seven PM? Okay, I'm gonna call up a question, and all those in favor? All those opposed? There you go. We are moving this to a special meeting on Monday, April fourteenth at seven PM. Thank you very much, Mr. Sobolski. Okay, moving on. We are gonna move to. Can you phone in? Um, moving into item number eleven point two. Um, I'm gonna speak on this one, so I'm actually gonna read it. Yes, what?
Sorry, I have the same, I have the same point on this one. It's moving this, transferring responsibility of a service to the other party.
Well, so this one, I'm gonna speak on it. So hang on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify any confusion. Eleven point two, um, prior to reading this recommendation, Mr. Sobolski, I'd just like to make clear, at no point in time did the Village of Puscoopie run the Puscoopie Community Farmers Market. It was actually run by me as an independent away from my mayor position. And so the Village of Puscoopie actually has not done anything regarding the farmers market. So what I'm actually thinking we should do is, um, we can discuss what I potentially like to see going forward to the regular council meeting, the next one, so that we can make a decision there. But there will be no transfer because at no time did the Village of Puscoopie do anything regarding the farmers market. So I'm gonna put this on the floor for discussion.
Sorry, your worship. Uh, why is a resolution required then? If it was just a personal, um, I guess, volunteer opportunity on behalf of yourself, uh, there wouldn't really be a resolution required to transfer the service over to the new group then?
No, no, no. The, the resolution that I'm looking to get for, from, um, for Jocelyn, that was the reason for the delegation, was to cover the, the, the cost of the community center. That's what that, that's for. So I'd like to make the recommendation that council, um, uh, receive the, um, Jocelyn Jones Community Market Group for discussion. Can I get a second there for that? Seconded by Counselor Johnson, we're just gonna discuss, I just want to get it onto the floor. Um, Ms. Jones came, came in, she's looking to take over the farmers market from me personally. Her delegation was regarding the fact that if she were to rent the community center with the village fee and the cleaning cost, she would have to up the table fee for her vendors to more than ten dollars per, per table. Right now, it's a ten dollar fee. That ten dollar fee covers her two million dollar li- liability, which is required from the, the, the farmers market. And so what she's come forward is she's actually asking this council to waive the rental fee on the village side. So she would still be responsible for the cleaning fee if she went past the eight PM threshold, but we would not be charging her for, for the community center. The reason for this, and why I think it's beneficial to the community, is the active aspect of it. She's been bringing people into the community. She has interest in working with TJ Mizie of, of Iron Wolf Athletics. of Iron Wolf Athletics, she's interested in working with the Village of Puuscoopie for Canon Day. So there's going to be a really great economical exchange between them. So it's sort of like, if you're willing to make it so I don't have to up these table fees, which could deter people from coming out, because it's cheaper to rent in town, then she's willing to take part in other economical things happening and other sports events within the community. Councilor Wall? Thank you for letting me say all that.
Of course. I'm just throwing this with half ears.
We'll explore an alternative option.
Exploring the alternative options. So the village still has to pay for the costs and whatnot, so would you waive, be an incurred cost on the village?
There would be no incurred cost on the table. Is that correct, Mr. Sobolski?
Would be no incurred cost. It would be a little bit of administrative time, because we would still have to complete the special event permit, or that's required for the use of the space. But we would be waiving the associated fee with that.
Okay. I'm going to put on a different hat and say, as being involved with the Legion, where the farmers market is being?
Yes, there was little interest from the vendors of continuing it at the Legion, because the advertising is difficult from the highway, where this, it's right on the main highway stretch.
Oh, okay.
And that's why she's wanting to do it there, because there's a lot of ample parking, it's seen directly from the highways people are driving on. That's also why she wants to do it during a Friday evening from 4 till 7, because she wants to catch the campers on the way out, because she is going to have people selling fruit and vegetables and baked goods.
Well, there is a secondary free option, either indoors or outdoors at the Legion, that is still on the table, and that would not take village staff time, and there is already a sign on the highway. I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah, I just know that for Ms. Jones, particularly, she had only asked to have it there. So that's where, yeah, that's where she would like to have it.
Two parts. The first part is, farmers market is kind of held with that B C Farmers Market Association. So I'm assuming that this person and this organization has gone through that-
She's completely registered.
-for that specific branding and whatnot and association. The other piece, though, is admittedly some confusion. If, it's the way that this is being presented, if you as your own person have present, has been working on something that's fantastic, and a farmers market is fantastic, and, you know, something for community members to do and local vendors to sell their wares and whatnot, that's great. But the confusion is, if this was solely your own personal endeavor, therefore this body has no authority over that personal endeavor to therefore transfer the responsibility as this is so-
We're not, we're not transferring any responsibility. And that was a miscommunication on my part, and I apologize to Mr. Sobolski for any confusion. I obviously do not do a very good job of voicing that to him. This was my own individual, there's no transfer of responsibility.
But then the wording of this recommendation makes it sound like it's this to this.
The only recommendation that's been ready that we're discussing it. There is no recommendation.
There is no recommendation.
Well, whereas, it would be probably best if essentially this person was coming to council in some form, whether it be-
Did she come as a delegation?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe it was in a meeting I was in. No, it wasn't?
It was the last committee, anyone in this?
I've got a delegation.
Well, maybe you weren't here. She came as a delegation. So she, she came, she presented as a delegation, she spoke on her insurance, her registration with B C Farmers Market, and her ask was that we waive the village half of the fee, so that she can keep the table fee at $10.
So that makes a heck of a lot more sense. That's why I-
I'm confusing everybody else, I'm sorry.
But I'll just simply clarify is, if a community organization comes to council requesting waiving of the fee to host a community event to make it more accessible to vendors, I'm always in support of such a thing.
I'm sorry, this is all me. I'm so sorry.
But we always have to use an air of caution that we are not, like, mixing up the personal with the responsibilities of our offices.
Yeah, no.
So the recommendation, as it is so put in the agenda, is not something I'm interested in participating in. However, if it is simply just waiving the fee for a person that has already come as a delegation, that's something I could support.
Thank you. I'm sorry, this is completely on me. There's been so much confusion. I'm so sorry, Mr. Sobolski.
Hey, Your Worship, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. I need to listen better.
No, you do not. You're just like, yes.
So I absolutely support the farmers market wherever they choose to be. I believe that Puuscoopie should have a farmers market.
Yeah.
And that being accessible from the highway is a good idea. I'm in favor of that. My concern, however, is what exactly is a community event? Because people rent the community center all the time, and they could say it's for the community, and are we setting a precedent by waiving a fee? Because we've previously had discussions where it was close votes regarding waiving the fees for other events that people could argue and did argue that were community events. And even so far as our own services having difficulty getting access to the community center, including when I was the liaison to the museum for their harvest tea. So, that being said, how do we go forward with this? By setting precedent that a community event that is not formally associated with the village gets access to that community center with a waived fee without having to give everybody a waived fee? Because there have been, it has been difficult for village organizations.
And that's, and that's where that economical bit comes in, where she's willing to work with the Village Puuscoopie for our Canon Day event.
Yep.
Plus, she's willing to host the farmers market during the all-ladies baseball tournament that's hosted by Iron Wolf Athletics.
Yep.
And so she's, she's working with us in that aspect, where she's going to be hosting extra markets to benefit the community. So us kind of, there's an exchange. Yes. That's what that exchange is. That's what, and that's really how I, I look at it. I look at it on the community benefit, so like, I totally understand what you're talking about. There, there has been, been things, we've always been really, really good about waiving the fee for the museum, for the library, for the seniors lawn stuff.
It's still a challenge for organizations like the museum. I can't speak to the other ones, I was never the person there. But it's been a challenge for the museum as well, which is a village-run organization that we-
I didn't think they had, I've, I've never, not voted in favor of us waiving the fee for the museum.
No, but it's still a challenge. I'm not, I'm not saying they've had to pay, I'm saying it's still a challenge.
It was like they've always had it free.
It's, yeah, but it's been a challenge. You're right, it has been free for them. But it's been a challenge sometimes for that to happen. So my, my issue with this, it's not an issue with the farmers market being there, I support that, it's the way we're going about it, I think maybe should be some sort of policy that doesn't need to come to us every time, where it's, if it's this type of event that is supporting the community, and there is some sort of exchange taking place, that to be a lesser fee or to be waived? Because we've had lots of these conversations, and sometimes they get it, and sometimes they don't. And looking from an outsider's perspective, it's sometimes it could seem arbitrary who gets it and who doesn't.
It, it can be difficult when you're trying to put that kind of policy in place or that added authority on the staff members, because it's, it's no different than development variance permits. The PRD has the same problem. They come into the PRD constantly, they're always saying there has to be, you know, a easier way to streamline this, maybe there needs to be a policy put forward. The issue is, is that when you're adding that added authority to the staff, who says what is a benefit? Who states what is an exchange? Who states what is working in favor, right? So now you're suddenly adding something extra, whereby bringing this to the public body, it's very transparent. It gives us the opportunity to not only learn ourselves about it, but to also really put behind those, those, those different learning opportunities as a public voting body. So this is something like, we, we see this every year for the museum, right? We see this sometimes for the community, for the public library for Easter and Halloween.
Yes, and for-
Yeah, right? And so this is something that comes forward. I think it's best to keep it at this table, because at the end of the day, when we're putting the decision on staff to say who's waiving and who's not, that's taking an opportunity from us to be more informed. Because at the end, because when people are phoning and they have questions, you can answer them. That's the important thing, right? So I really like keeping that conversation at this table. I think it's beneficial for everybody, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I think about it.
Yeah, cool. Councilor Ravel?
Just for clarification, besides the agreement between the school district and the village regarding the use of the community center, are there any other policies or bylaws which govern or put into process the, like, essentially the hall rental? Is there other, other things? Are there existing policies or bylaws that cover the use of the halls?
Uh, Councilor, respectfully, we have the Parks and Open Spaces bylaw that does cover portions of the community center through the user fee schedule, as well as our consolidated user fee bylaw that's under development and review right now, through the administrative scope. It's covered in that, those parameters.
I would like to make the motion that this be brought forward to the next regular council meeting with the recommendation that council waives the fee for Ms. Jones and her farmers market, I can't find the name of it, being held at the community center. Are you seconding that, Councilor Johnson? Thank you.
Can I clarify with the, sorry, point of order? The point for leveraging this? What is the this?
That we waive the village side of the community center fee for Jocelyn Jones Community Farmers Market.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Just like we said, I'm just like mulling it at this point in time. I'm confusing everybody.
Well, just like this be brought forward, because it's, if I can clarify, it's because of the, is this be brought forward, is it what we're trying to write in, or what you said, what exactly did you say?
You know what? You're all reading English, and I'm speaking Japanese. So I just, I've been doing so well with this recommendation so far, I think I should just keep it going. It's a mystery what I'm up to.
But to clarify, a community member came as a delegation to say, hey, I want to do a thing.
Yes.
Council, will you waive this portion of the regular piece not going beyond 8:00 PM, because that's on that person?
That's on that person to pay the fee, yeah.
And so now we are simply moving this into the next council meeting?
Yes. Okay. All right. Are we all good? Clear as mud? Perfect. I'm doing a great job. No idea, just killing it. Missing you already. When are you coming home?
Oh, we're back for next week.
Oh, thank God. Okay. All right, ready? I mean, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm abstaining, because I'm unclear on what it is.
You're killing me.
Well, I'm not 100% sure what we're doing, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure, that's fine. All right. Thank you very much. I hope that was somewhat clear. I apologize to everybody for my ridiculousness.
I apologize for abstaining, because I-
That's fine. Clear as mud. That's what I've gone and done.
But everyone doing abstaining.
I know, that's fair. Okay. Moving on. Bylaws, 12.1 has been stricken from the agenda, it's moving on to item number 12.2, bylaw number, nope, that's moved. We didn't do that one. We did.
We voted on this during the regular-
We voted on the first reading. Can, I would like to make the recommendation that we move item 12.2 to the April 14th special council meeting. Can I get a secondary on that? Seconded by Councilor Johnson. Mr. Sobolski, are you okay with that?
This portion was just for discussion, though, on that bylaw. That wasn't for second and third reading. It's just for, just for discussion.
Oh, in preparation? Oh. Okay, I rescind my original motion.
I'll rescind my second?
Yeah.
Or you're saying it's back?
Okay, well then, item number 12.2, bylaw number 1063, financial plan 2025 to 2029 for discussion. Can I get a secondary? I'm like, throw me a bone. Okay. Any further discussion regarding, well, this is, you can, you want your soapbox? Please.
Okay. So essentially, this is setting the tax rates, obviously, for 2025, and then because we have the five-year requirement, we've got to also lay that out.
Yeah.
Is this proposing a 7% tax increase for the next five years, including 2025? Is that how it would work functionally, based off of the numbers provided?
It would only be a 7% increase for 2025. And then everything else will be going off of just, oh, sorry about that. Everything else will be going off of pretty much what would be the same tax rate in future years.
Just with the assumed increase in assessed value of the village's properties? So it's saying 2025 at 7%, but then success, the success of four years are just assumed to be zero with appreciation of assessed values in the village?
Compounding values, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to give them time to think. There we go. Yes, Councilor Ravel?
Obviously, we've hosted, you know, a town hall, then another town hall. We've made, you know, various opportunities to hear from the members of the public. The survey was half in favor, half not in favor, this, that, and the other. My question would be regarding, how much outreach or response have we received in regards to the business community in Puuscoopie and those who run commercial and industrial properties? How will this impact their business operations and the affordability of doing business in the village?
Mr. Sobolski?
We've heard very little responsive feedback from our commercial and industrial partners. So again, we don't necessarily know what the inclination of that feedback is. That could be a good thing, and, you know, we could be receiving no response, because other parties that we work with are happy with this change, or accept to the change, or that could be just the fact that, you know, maybe they were unaware of the survey or the outreach efforts that were going on on behalf of the municipality.
Councilor Wall?
How are the businesses notified of this survey?
So we didn't actually reach out to any specific demographics, parties, or zoning classifications. Everything was given out as a general dispersal through P O boxes. So if any business does have a P O box with us in Puuscoopie, they would have received it that way, or through online formats.
My concern with that is that a lot of the businesses in Puus, especially in the industrial area, don't have P O boxes. In Puuscoopie, they have P O boxes in Dawson Creek, or have mailing addresses elsewhere. So what I'm seeing is that we haven't heard anything back from any businesses, if, or have we? No, we've heard, we've heard nothing back from any business. Is there, and there is the possibility that the businesses that we have are completely unaware of the survey to be able to respond to it?
It's a possibility.
I think we should, I think we should figure that out and make sure that the businesses are aware of this.
We can send out, we can send out a notice, attach the survey, and give them an additional intake period.
That'd be great.
How would we like to proceed with such a, right, at a motion?
Uh, do you need a motion regarding that, Mr. Sobolski?
Take a corner.
I didn't think so, yeah. He's normally pretty good. He'll just do it. And then, when's our next regular council meeting? It's on the 23rd, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you were to send this out by Monday, the 14th, and run it for the fine business days, I'm pretty sure you could email it out. You should receive, if you're going to receive any responses, by the 23rd. You could include those in the regular council meeting? Is that enough time?
We can do our best.
Yeah. Okay. I know I've spoken to a couple of business owners, I've spoken to, I'm not going to say their name, actually. I've spoken to a couple of business owners, and they're, they understand. I haven't heard negative feedback, but they're friends of mine, so it might be one of those, like, you know.[1731.04]
Fair enough, fair enough.
Yes.
Um, so we're talking about this regarding the specificity of the scope of such a survey. It is to businesses that are local to Poo Scoopy and the commercial industrial zoning and seeing what their thoughts are on the taxation increase, proposed taxation increase.
Well, I'm by the sound of things, I think Mr. Sobolski is just going to send out the same survey that he sent out to the public. And then hopefully we will receive responses and then by that point in time, he can include them on the regular council meeting for the twenty third.
And there should be some sort of mailing address on the tax rule or something like that.
Oh, yeah, well, most likely staff probably already have their contact, their emails, right? You know, business emails are pretty easy to find via Google, which is super handy, so.
I just want to make sure that we're not sending it back to the P O boxes that businesses don't.
Yeah, no, I think probably the best would be e would be emailing that out. Hey, Mr. Sobolski?
Well, what I'm doing is emailing one copy out, then at each physical uh commercial or industrial location, we'll drop off one at the at the doorway.
Oh, good, perfect.
That'd be awesome. That'd be awesome.
That works out really good.
I just want to make sure that our businesses and our industrial that are the majority or should be the majority of our tax base, I should say, are aware of these changes and want to know whether to input it.
Well, sadly, in Poo Scoopy, the majority of our tax base is residential.
That's why I said should be.
Yeah, should be, but it's not. Okay, all right, sounds good. Any other discussion? All right, we're going to move on and you don't need a need a motion for that and we've discussed it, so. Um, moving on to administration reports, C A O report. All right, what's been up to? Well, hang on, he's writing. I'm getting the one minute. Hang on, I'm not ready.
Apologies, Your Worship and Public Office, just keeping down that motion for um that follow up there for sending out the uh survey to our business and commercial partners. So regarding administrative activities over the last month, here we are. So outlining our administrative activities from March twenty fourth to April fourth, some of the things we've been working on are major projects and tasks. Our the bill forty four rezoning project coordination. So as we know from a previous council meeting, we have directly awarded our um rezoning bill forty four redraft project to Urban Systems um just due to the fact that we have a very, very tight timeline on this project and they're very familiar with it. Um, so we have been working on alignment of provincial housing policy timelines with our partner, uh mapping a policy requirement of what we want refinement of what we want to try to accomplish and get out of this project as well as dates for next steps. Um, I have worked on a U B C M public notification and evacuation route planning grant. Uh, so this is something that I have been in communication with our fire chief regarding. And we do need to do a E R P review and update, which is our uh emergency response plan, as well as our standard operating procedures for an emergency operations center as well as evacuation. So part of this uh funding application, which was for forty thousand dollars, would help establish formal public notification procedures as well as equipment or software for that, update the village's evacuation plan, expand and modernize our communication systems platform for mass notifications, as well as um uh authored letter of support and a grant budget and deliverable and budget compliance document outlining the work plan for it. We worked on a lot of our preparations and materials for the April second budget public hearing. So we did have a presentation, um so speaking notes. Uh, there was a summary of the cost saving initiatives that Council Rabel had uh previously alluded to during the financial plan discussion regarding uh deductions to discretionary funds such as council travel travel and Canada Day festivities. Um, we have been working on our heart hotel site uh update, so we will have that uh a further update in camera regarding that uh how the hazard review and internal assessments going on that project. Uh, we have slowly started the implementation plan for our asset management software, which is Maintaining X. Um, so we're starting to work on our location, primary asset and sub asset uh import workbook. So this is taking all of our assets in our tangible capital uh asset chart, which outlines it being almost twenty thousand assets um by school number or um identifier. And we have to upload that into a working system that can be utilized uh for daily tracking. We do have our twenty twenty five O C P under review with Stuart McDonald Stewart. Uh, they're about halfway through the review right now and they're just making sure everything aligns with um required legalese, development trends, as well as infrastructure needs. Uh, we're hoping to have that O C P review done by most likely some point in the end of quarter two or the beginning of quarter two. Uh, so in the next probably four to six weeks, we'll be seeing that and hopefully adopting it by uh early quarter three of twenty twenty five. Um, we've been working really closely with the Public Works crew and our operations team, um researching a new road patching infrastructure product. So this is uh Romex D four thousand and Romex D seven thousand. So these are two European European based technologies out of Germany. Um, and they're game changers in the road patching and road resurfacing uh industry. So in this industry, we haven't seen very much, uh let's just say, improvements to our cold patching infrastructure or technology over the last forty to sixty years. And this is a permeable uh road patching agent that works well in areas of extreme temperature contrast as well as fluctuating um frost heaps, which we experience in our region quite a bit. So this uh D four thousand is a compact patching unit for sidewalks, small road repairs, manhole covers, things of that nature. We will be sharing some um further information and details regarding these products with Public Office at our next council meeting. So we have some brochures just outlining case studies that were done for the road sealing agent uh down in Calgary on Deerfoot Trail. And they applied this road sealing agent in twenty nineteen and it's still effectively operating as of today. And usually during with a typical road sealing agent, you're lucky if you get three to six months out of that patching work. So uh this will be a game changer for us in Poo Scoopy if we're able to onboard this this new technology or this new um new type of repair mortar. Um, lots of work has been going towards our bylaw budget development. So a lot of legislative preparation towards bylaw ten sixty two, which we were hoping to have uh for first reading at the special council meeting. But uh after a lot of great feedback from our strong administrative uh team, we thought let's take a a chance to take a step back, review our work and make sure that it is uh meeting the mark of what's required. So we're really hoping to have that on our uh special council meeting, possibly by the fourteenth, but most likely uh at a later date. Uh, we've also been working on the financial plan bylaw, which has been reviewed by Public Office as of today, as well as our twenty twenty five tax rates bylaw. So we're still waiting for a few other of our inter agencies to work with just to give us our tax assessment rates that we will be applying to the bylaw and then having that ready for the public. Um, so again, a lot of this work does align with some of our strategic uh goals, which is again, infrastructure modernization and and increasing our minimum maintenance standards, uh financial sustainability, governance and organizational capacity, increasing that regional and inter government governmental partnerships and resilience and emergency preparedness have been the focus of the last month of administrative activities. Is there any questions for Mayor of Public Office?
Uh, thank you for this report. Um, in regards to number seven with the Romex and the product demonstration, obviously seeing how it works and whatnot. Um, would this fall under capital or operations? Is it purely just the product that is, you know, to fill holes? Or is there, maybe I'm misinterpreting this, but is the patching unit, is this actually a machine, a new device?
Oh, no, so uh I appreciate that 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 uh question and that feedback, Counselor. It's actually an actual uh re uh reactive road agent, so there isn't any fleet type of operative machinery or a trailer unit. Um, it's a road patch and mortar mixture that's made onsite and mixed onsite by our operational staff. Um, and it's just, it's a lot different of uh, uh, let's just say, a outcome based uh product compared to your normal cold patching mixture. Um, so ultimately, it does fall under operations. So we have an operational budget line, item line each year for road padding, r road patching and maintenance uh features and fixtures. Uh, and this would go under that expense line and code.
Um, and then further to that, thank you. But further to that, the two pieces, um essentially, this product sounds relatively new or recently introduced. Does it meet the various requirements in Canada in regards to public safety, the liability of it, the environmental standards, its lifespan, breaking down, um, you know, potentially percolating into the water table, all these various concerns? Uh, obviously, it sounds like it's been demonstrated in Calgary, Alberta, but um does it meet the various requirements that the Canadian government, Canada and B C require for this product?
Also, it meets provincial requirements in all town provinces, all three territories, and it meets federal federal uh transportation requirements as well. It only advises that it can't be used as a mortar repair mixture for any roadways, including bridges.
Okay.
Well, it is a new, it is, it is a newer technology in North America, uh but it has been used in the European Union for about the last forty, thirty or forty years.
Sorry, I just, I'm just intrigued. It's always good to hear about something new, especially in this space. There hasn't been a lot of innovation in the last, since the Romans, but anyways.
Romans.
But anyway.
That's a really long time.
So what I'm, what I'm getting at is, um, just for the sake of argument, um, is the ratio, it's a little bit more costly, but it lasts longer? Or is it about the same price and lasts longer? Where's our benefit loss?
Oh, you're looking, Counselor, at about thirty percent increase on procurement cost. Uh, but on actual life cycle, you would be looking at about an increase of longevity from three months of an old typical conventional road repair mortar mixture to six to twelve months with this type of mixture. Or, for example, the Deer, the Deerfoot Trail case study, um, it's lasted almost seven years.
So thirty percent more cost for a hundred to two hundred percent more lifespan?
Absolutely.
Councilor Wall?
Forgive me if I if I misheard here, but do our typical road patches in the village last three months?
Now, your typical road, road, road patch mixture usually tends to degrade after three to six months after heavy traffic usage.
That's why we have all those signs that say no big trucks.
My road didn't work there.
Yes, innovation with this road, road patching mixture is, it is permeable. So our normal road patching mixture, you know, eventually a divot is created through displacement as temperatures change. Then water ends up entering that that pothole, it freezes, then it thaws out, it expands. Um, this being a permeable mixture, it doesn't necessarily crater away like your typical road patching mixture. It breathes with the elements and then it expunges the moisture during the summer.
Yes, Counselor?
I do have a question on that, just just on that. I know it's an operational question, but the question is, if it's permeable, have there been studies on this product if we're spending about, if we're spending more money on it? And if the water goes into it, because I know there's been issues with this elsewhere in Alberta where they tried other things like this, where permeable road solutions, the water goes in and then when it freezes, it, there's water in it and it just crumbles it into gravel, basically.
So this, this product is not, uh, it's not susceptible to the same type of, let's say, uh permeable issues that we've seen with some of these other road agents. Again, there's a really strong case study that's uh will be uh attached as an appendices in the following council meeting that outlines the breakdown of a cost benefit analysis that was done by um the Department of Transportation in Alberta. And it outlines a lot of those concerns that are uh brought up here, Counselor.
Fair enough. I appreciate that. Um, I just know that there have been, lots of these products have been tried in Alberta. Some of them work amazingly and some work over the summertime. So I just want to make sure that this is actually one of those products that is is good. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sobolski, for all your work that you've done on this wonderful, as always, you and our team are are the best in the west east. So we're all pretty spoiled, so thank you. It sounds like you've already
Thank you, Worship. I really appreciate that.
So much work into this. That's wonderful. Okay, all right, moving on to item thirteen point two point two. So, Mr. Stavro, it's lovely to have you in person. We missed you so much. So happy that you are back home. Uh, we have a Bible?
No, the Bible Officer Report.
Oh, oops. Oh, I just wanted to talk to
Sorry, I just pointed.
I want a motion to hear the bylaw officer report in person.
Oh, you, you'd like to have him come in?
I would. We're not by law.
Acta. We do have acta here. Hang on.
I know, but we have the motion to hear your report.
Point of order. Okay, we are ready. Thank you so much for bringing that that out. Anything from the bylaw report that anybody would like to talk on?
I wasn't.
He has been like super busy by looks of things, but it is spring and things do tend to get really busy for him around this time of year, so I'm not all that surprised. Um, and he's doing well? Everything's been going good?
Bylaw enforcement uh capacity has been going very, very strong, busy. Uh, like you mentioned, it seems like as the spring rust shakes off from a little bit of winter, there's a little bit more activity in that department. But um more than capable and we're very happy with the results.
Awesome. Okay, and it looks great. Cheers.
I'll rescind my motion for bylaw. I meant to say acta.
Nobody seconded your motion. I'm going to rescind it. Okay, all right. Uh, motion to receive for information, can I get a secondary? Seconded by Councilor Johnson. All those in favor? And then to receive for information. Okay, back to what I was saying. We're so happy to have you, Mr. Stavro. Hello, hello. I'm so glad that you've made it in person. I've been wanting to see you and just kind of get a bit of an update on how things are going and what you've been up to. And I know you've been extremely busy and you were traveling, so we haven't seen you since Christmas. I hope you had a wonderful Christmas and I hope you had a great trip.
I did. Thank you so much, Your Worship. It's actually great to be back in the environment and being back in the office and having the opportunity to meet with staff in person. It's, it's really super great to see everybody in the village. Uh, I want, I'm here to talk a little bit about my work um and about some of this stuff that Mr. Sobolski and I have been involved in. One of the major projects that's currently going on in the region is the rural immigration program. The rural immigration program is basically a uh program that is um a partnership between Community Futures in Peace Region with the Northern Lights College. This is basically a program that supports the region in recruiting immigrants and fast tracking those immigrant applications through a process that has been agreed upon with the Government of Canada. So there is a signed contract between the Government of Canada and this region, which allows us to develop and establish a vetting process where we actually vet immigrants in specific categories that the region has identified as a huge need to. Um, and is basically supporting the economic development activities by allowing business to hire the skills that they actually need. So this is a working group uh that while it's led by Community Futures as well as the Northern Lights College, has the economic development staff from all the municipalities in this region, us, who's um at Dawson Creek, Fort Saint John, Jedwin, Tambo Ridge, you know, Hudson or um
Taylor.
Taylor, um, and
John. That's a cool, that's a nice name.
Well, we have that.
Um, so all the municipalities, we sit around the table. Some of the work that we have been doing is basically developing documents and developing agreements as to how we're all going to work together and communicate with the Government of Canada in order to be successful in that piece. One of the major pieces of work that has come up lately is to actually take a look at what type of um national professional code, which is the worker types that are going to be the ones that we're going to target. And there's been specific conversations around that. For example, one of the things that uh the working group has come up with is that there's a lot of businesses that tell us that they need worker bees. They need people that fix things, frontline workers, like grocery store workers, um, uh, you know, store front staff that seems to to be um an extreme shortage in this part of our province. Um, so there's been a lot of work that was put around that. Um, I've been part of that working group so far. Uh, there's an M O U that has been developed uh that is going to be coming forward.
Well, actually, I'm glad that you mentioned that. That actually did come forward to us on our March twelfth committee of poll.
Okay.
Um, and this, Councilor, this one, we did receive it for information. We did not sign on to the M O U as there were a few issues that we were concerned about regarding funding shortfalls. So within the M O U, it had mentioned that if there were any funding shortfalls, then it would be the responsibility of the municipal governments or governments taking part to sort of fund from that point. Due to the fact that we are potentially creating, we are facing a deficit going into our twenty twenty five budget. We received it for information, but we did not opt in to take part due to that issue right there.
I can explain that, actually, and uh Mr. Sobolski and I just had that conversation yesterday. Um, so and, you know, I'd like to apologize actually for not communicating that in the past. What that clause defines is basically economic development staff time to participate in the committee. So the way that contract is supposed to be defined is this. Uh, basically, each municipality is asked to provide staff time to participate on the committee.
I'm just bringing it up, sorry. I just, the endpoint of having a computer.
So basically, what it's asking for, uh, Your Worship, is my time
Okay.
to sit on the committee. Now, what the idea is, is that if there's no funding, if there's no further funding, move it forward through the Government of Canada. Because this is, right now, this is funded, part of this project is funded through the Government of Canada. There's actually a staff person that has been hired that will be doing the vetting of applications and receiving the inquiries on a more centralized side before the municipality gets involved with particular individuals that we may end up with sponsoring. Uh, so so basically, what the commitment is, is my time to participate on committees, to participate if there is, you know, for to participate if there is, you know, for example, if there is a recruitment kind of, um, exercise where we're trying to recruit, like we recruited a new staff member to, to manage our project for a year, um, that I would be available to be part of that process if it's needed.
Yeah, because within the doc, the document, it does state that if required due to funding shortfalls, local governments may be presented with the funding request for the 2026, 2027 budget year. This request will be on a per capita basis and will be presented in the summer of 2025 for consideration for 2026, 2027 financial plan. So my understanding when I, when I had read that within the document is that it would require staff time for 2025, but would require further funding for 2026, 2027.
So it would if we agreed to continue on the project.
Okay.
Because the idea is that if the municipalities do not see benefit of it or are unable to fund this past, um, the initial two, two years of the funding, I think, or one year of the funding, the first year of the funding, is then by March 2026, we will give notice to the Government of Canada that we're going to discontinue this project. And at that point, the project will close within three months.
And what benefit do you see this being, um, happening within the village Pouskupi?
So while we don't have a lot of businesses within the village of Pouskupi, we do have some businesses, and those businesses may need employees. And at this point, one of the things that I've seen in some of the businesses, at least one I can think of, there's a lot of foreign staff that are actually staffing those businesses. A, a lot of times, foreign staff, they either come to Canada on a temporary basis, or they come and go. And what we would like to do is we would like to be able to stabilize staffing in the region, and hopefully, when people do move their, in the region, if we are able to sponsor them immigration wise to stay in Canada as permanent residents, that they actually will choose the region as their place of residence.
Is there an expiration date on the expectation of this MOU?
The expiration date on the expectation of this MOU is comes up to that notice period of March 2026. So basically.
By the end of March.
By the end of March 2026, so twelve months from now. So, or less than twelve months from now, because we're in April. So basically, in March 2026, if again, if there is absolutely the region sees no benefit to it, the municipalities are unable to contribute for whatever reason, at that point, there will be a notice that will be given to the Government of Canada that we're shutting down the project within three months.
I think my biggest thing is, is at the, definitely the, the funding shortfall was like a, right?
Yeah.
Because Pouskupi is, is quite small and quite limited in our commercial aspect, I would definitely bring this back to the next committee of the whole meeting for further discussion, if you're willing to come in.
Absolutely.
But I think what I would be wanting to see is that you've had a conversation with some of those local businesses.
Okay.
Um, and, and really just kind of reach out to them, talk to them a little bit about this, so that you can maybe sort of provide some feedback to, to us from our local businesses.
Yeah, we, we have had a request.
Yeah.
Uh, from one of the businesses, uh, through this project.
Okay.
Uh, for, um, assistance with, um, um, the ability to, um, ensure that, you know, their long, their long-term staffing ability.
Yeah.
That request is on hold right now until we're finished that with the whole framework piece of how.
Yeah.
We're very much close to the point where, um, we're going to be proceeding. Now, my role on that would be to actually go meet with the business and provide the initial vetting, meaning go have a conversation, make sure they're legitimate.
Yeah.
And basically go back to the committee, to the, to the regional committee and make a recommendation, and that would be my role to that. Uh, I do appreciate your concerns there, uh, and I am happy to go do the further vetting that you requested, uh, your worship, and come back with a further report.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Subolski, are you okay that I've, I've kind of, I, I'm gonna give that direction within a motion, I just wanted to see what councillor Wall's question is, are you comfortable if I do that? I haven't really discussed doing that with you, so I don't want to be throwing you under the bus.
Due to the fact that it is a, a direction for a, um, reporting staff, it will require a motion.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Uh, through you, mayor, to, to Mr. Stavro here, um, does this program include our healthcare professionals? Because I know our hospital has a lot of foreign staff that we really need, we like, we are so desperate for nurses and doctors and cleaners and everything, uh, and I know that those positions might not be within the village of Pouskupi, but those services are essential for our community in the way.
So, uh, actually councillor member Wall, this is a really good question, um, in last week's meeting of the, of this working group, that was discussed, and those professions are part of what it is that we're looking for. Now, Northern Health has been an organization that has been invited to join us, they haven't yet, but either way, we've added the possibility of, um, th- those National Occupational Codes as one of the twenty-five codes that we're going to be focusing on as part of this process.
Have you reached out to school district fifty-nine as well?
Uh, we have reached out to school district fifty-nine, and one of the positions that is actually on the report, on, on, that we're using the occupational code on, is, um, educational assistance.
Okay.
So, and actually, that's also connected with the program, um, of the educational system program through Northern Lights College as well.
Okay, um, oh, please.
So, as I'm listening to the staff report, I do appreciate the staff report, however, I would like to declare potential conflict of interest, as Northern Lights College is my employer, and so I wouldn't feel comfortable being a part of a decision that moves for, moves forward business in regards to this. Um, I'd like to listen to the staff report, however, I would not feel comfortable being a part of a decision regarding this matter.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if we're equipped that, because this kind of came within the report, so.
So, well, I would just like to clarify, you're not in a conflict of interest in your position in Northern Lights College, because you are not a stakeholder, nor do you make any financial gain from the decisions made at this table?
Yeah.
Just so you're aware, so you may be uncomfortable, but legally, you are not within conflict.
But I see it as a perceived conflict of interest, and I'd like to err instead of conflict, or caution, therefore, I would like to recuse myself for making decisions to move this forward if possible.
You know, actually, um, 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 it's very interesting that councillor member Rabble brings that up, your worship, because I have the same question myself, because I'm an employee of the Northern Lights College as well. The thing is, here, here the, the thing about it, is the, from my potential conflict of interest, I don't make any decisions that are related to this. I'm part of a working group that provides recommendations, but at the end of the day, I'm only one member of many, uh, at least nine that I can think of, uh, so I by no means have a deciding vote under any circumstance.
None.
So, so that's number one. Uh, number two, in order for us to, in order for us and, and perceive conflict of interest, councillor member Rabble, I totally see that. Um, in order for someone to have a conflict of interest, a legal conflict of interest and an ethical conflict of interest, they have to either, to be personally, um, gained by doing that. By doing this, you're not really benefiting any one organization. By doing this, all you're basically doing is you are working with the region and potentially bringing more people in. So the college is not going to make or lose any money out of this, or anything of that nature, but I do understand that there is this perceived conflict that, that, that may make you uncomfortable. I have the same exact thought myself, and I have to think about it quite deeply, um, to, to, to make sure that I'm not putting myself in a conflict of interest as well.
It is up to you, I cannot tell you what you can and cannot do, it's within your own comfort.
Yeah.
I would prefer to recuse myself.
Okay. Yes.
I asked for the healthcare. I asked for the healthcare professionals, uh, which is included in this. I really appreciate that, I think that's great. Are, I know there are vacancies at our local RCMP detachment, quite a few, are law enforcement professionals also included in this?
So I don't think they are.
Okay.
Um, it was a discussion that we had, okay, about that. So the, the RCMP is actually a really interesting idea, and I'll tell you why, because we as a region do not recruit RCMP, and in order for someone to be RCMP, they already have to be either Canadian citizens or permanent residents. And therefore, by the fact that they're not, they wouldn't be able to be recruited in those positions. So for us to get involved in this process when we have a very small window of time that this program is available and could go away, it wouldn't be the best use of resources. I mean, I know why you're mentioning that, but again, it's not necessarily possible, like, we wouldn't be able to possibly do what it is that needs to be done in order to support those types of recruitment.
Thank you, no, that makes sense, that absolutely makes sense, I'm just thinking, I know public safety is on a lot of people's minds right now with the recent events and everything, and I know our hospital has been closed more than I think a lot of people would like it to be, including myself.
Well, if you don't mind, mayor, there's one more thing I'd like to add. So even, there was a big conversation, and I'll share it with you, with the hospital staff, and actually, food service supervisors are on our list of people to recruit, because that's an area that we actually have a shortage in this region, I found that. Now, in terms of nursing staff, a lot of nursing staff that come from abroad and are not permanent residents or citizens yet, oftentimes are actually not eligible to practice because of educational requirements. And therefore, that could create a problem in, in them being able to participate in this program. That is something that could potentially be an issue.
Yes.
Uh, this is my last thing. So on that point, about the nurses needing extra educational requirements and whatnot, could this program help lobby the provincial, be, be a, a strong voice and lobby with the provincial government and/or the federal government to streamline those requirements and make it easier for more doctors and nurses to, to come?
So, there's been, not through this program, but there's been an announcement very recently through the Canadian Medical Association. Um, actually, Alexander, that I used to work with in, oh, he's former CEO of the Children's Hospital of Eastern Ontario, he's now the CEO of, uh, the Canadian Medical Association. They actually are lobbying the federal government to, and to move forward with changes in the licensing requirements for healthcare professionals, because right now, we are operating in a system that has thirteen different healthcare systems, in which when you transfer from system to system, you may have inherently different licensing requirements. So they're lobbying the federal government to actually work towards one licensing requirement for health professionals across Canada. How soon that will happen, I don't know, but that is something that's been talked about for many years, but most recently, the Canadian Medical Association has released a paper on that.
Thank you.
All right, so with all the great discussion that we've, we've had, um, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we add the Northeast B C Rural Community Immigration Pilot Program to the next committee of the whole meeting, and that Mr. Stavro reports on the pro, the, the program, as well as report on community impact from this pilot, seconded by councillor Wall.
Wait a minute, at this time, I'd like to accuse myself from the decision and discussion as I have a perceived conflict of interest, as Northern Lights College is my current employer.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion regarding the motion I've just made? Uh, Mr. Subolski, does that cover everything within the motion?
Uh, I just, I will, sorry, I will add to the motion that this will be through, uh, your worship's, uh, communication through the administration office, reporting to the EDO's office.
Thank you. Okay, all right, may I call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, all right, councillor Rabble, you're allowed back in. Okay, moving on to item, oh, and thank you so much for that. Yes, thank you so much, that was lovely seeing you. I'm just trying to find reasons to keep bringing you back. I just miss you so much.
I'm happy to come.
All right, and we're gonna. Drive careful homes. Um, we're gonna move on to item thirteen point two point three, uh, the council receives the fire chief report outlining village Pouskupi's fire chief activities for March twenty-five for information, can I, seconded, seconded by councillor Rabble, discussion. All those in favor? And that is carried. Step up really quick. Okay.
We still maintain quorum.
We still maintain quorum.
Totally do, yeah. Okay, item number thirteen point two point four, Public Works Director Report, the council accepts the Public Work Director Report outlining village Pouskupi Public Works activities for March twenty-five for information, seconded by councillor Johnston, thank you, discussion. Councillor Rabble?
Thank you again for this report, this is the, my understanding, I think the second time I've seen this.
Yeah, I love it.
It's good to see, it's good to celebrate all the work that the Public Works Department does, um, they're around, they're doing a lot of things, it's good to see staff members getting, you know, various training opportunities, first aid certification, confined space, uh, looking at the heart hotel, looking around, just all the daily work that goes on to keep this place functioning. If you don't maintain it, it'll all fall apart, so we've got to keep maintaining it every day, and it's good to, uh, celebrate it and display it and show, you know, what's actually going into it, so I do appreciate this report. Um, I don't have anything specific to pull out from this report, but I do, do appreciate it, so thank you to staff and time for this. Thank you.
Appreciate the councillors, and I'll be sure to share that all, uh, with our reporting staff in the operational department. Um, I know we, we shared those kudos and sentiments, uh, for positive feedback regarding the first report at our staff meeting on Tuesday, and that was very well received, so I will look forward and I'm enthused to share that with our reporting staff regarding this secondary feedback, thank you councillor.
Yeah.
Councillors.
Looks, looks great, wonderful job, seems like they've been extremely busy, I've been seeing them out and, out and about every day, they're up there doing something different, so they're doing a wonderful job getting us all ready for summer, so that's awesome.
They're doing a fantastic job, we're very, very lucky and fortunate to have.
We are, okay, any other discussion regarding it? All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on to special and capital projects. Uh, anything that anybody wants to talk on?
Uh, I move that council accepts the March twenty-five capital and special projects report as information.
Seconded by councillor Johnston. Um, I love that you put the village office park redevelopment design options in there, I see you've been working really, really hard for Park and Play, I love the options that they quote, put in there, uh, like a third of the cost of what they were originally talking. Um, two hundred eighty-nine thousand is definitely far closer to the number we were all looking for, so that's wonderful news.
Like I mentioned, your worship, this would be my fifth municipal park that we've developed, so, um, I'm very fortunate to have that experience under my belt and know where to go so we can get some of those cost procurement savings compared to our initial quotes.
Yeah, no, no, this is, this is wonderful, thank you, I was, I was going through the designs and I know that we had previously talked about the one with the train, because it kind of like went with our, like, whole train station theme of, of our town, and I was like, oh, that one is so cute.
Especially in the third quote option, in the third concept option, there's an inclusion of an outdoor fitness center, and with us lacking an actual. and with us lacking an actual dedicated fitness space in Puscoopie, um within budget, this would again alleviate another need for the community as well as increase a service level through a perceived service level increase. It's very, you know, it's very apparent, it's reflective, it's demonstrative. You will be able to see that as a change as uh was alluded to, I believe councillor Wall's previous discussions alluding to taxation increases. And it's easier to uh swallow a potential taxation increase when you do see a perceived service level change. So we see that as a new implementation or component into this park development project that wasn't necessarily considered beforehand. So our goal is to try to allow for a um an option for play or recreation and leisure for all ages ranging from three to, let's say, a hundred and three.
Yeah, and this is like using the current size that we have of our park. Like, I was like looking at stone seating and pathways, and I'm like, how are they gonna fit it all in over there?
It would use the actual current uh footprint of the existing uh playground structures. Um obviously, modernizing them with what the requirements are for uh a newer facility. Um as well as including a, let's say, a gathering area. It could be a clam shell, it's been called in other spaces. So if we're ever having like, let's say, a art in the park type of um activity, or if there is slam poetry happening, or we have, you know, some artists and musicians within the area that are gonna be participating in an engagement event, this will allow us to have an additional space to to host that.
This looks wonderful. So with this, with these design options from Park and Play, um going forward, me and you are just gonna continue looking for the money, hey? That's that's basically the plan and.
Correct. I'm working uh pretty diligently with Grantmatch right now on a couple of procurement applications for some high leverage grants regarding uh Cultural Spaces Fund, things of that nature, as well as some UVCM-related grants that we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to move the needle in the six-figure range, our six-figure range in the next uh next capital year.
Wonderful news. Thank you so much.
We do, we do have Lara and Shelley coming as an in-person delegation to present uh their park options at the June committee of the whole.
Oh, wonderful news. Okay, good. Thank you. That was my my next question. Yes, councillor Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Sobolski, for making the point I was going to make again. I I really appreciate that. Um my, my other point I'm gonna make is I was just going to ask, how far along are we on just adding temporary gates? Uh cause I know there are some children in the community that may or may not be some flight risks within the park, so.
Well, we just got our community procurement uh membership number completed, and they do have an awesome uh gate procurement program. So we are in the process of of doing that. Uh I would say it's still at the preliminary stages councillor, uh but we are working towards it.
Okay. Is it, is it possible to potentially have just two gates set up by the summertime? I don't think it'd be a huge project.
Yeah, that would be the goal. Uh we were just waiting for our membership to be finalized through uh community procurement, and one of those programs that we did sign up for was the the gate and fencing program. So uh we do have some movement on uh happening on that, and I don't anticipate it taking longer than us um let's say, reaching a compromise or solution or completion on this by some point in early summer.
Thank you. Perfect.
Delicious.
Delicious, is that what you said?
Okay. Anything else regarding capital and special partners?
Uh only other mentions here is we have started doing our uh procurement quotation purposes for our trackless unit, and we're looking at potential fifteen to eighteen percent in savings at this po- at this point. Um we have uh finalized our extension for the Indigenous Engagement Requirement Funding Program. Uh so that's just an EMCR-related funding program so that we can have some collaboration with nearby First Nations on um emergency response collaboration. So we do have eighty-two thousand dollars in that final deliverable, and we're hoping to have that completed by next March. Uh we do have a work plan that's outlined to meet those goals and those milestones, so we're pretty confident in that. Uh again, we worked on the uh public notification evacuation plan grant, so there's just a little bit of capital um capital oversight that is required from there. And then a little bit of a breakdown of some different grant match, uh grant match funding strategies and the specific funding uh allocations that we're uh prioritizing at this moment.
Wonderful. When it comes to meeting with our our local Indigenous community, I'm assuming that's gonna be Kelly Lake for sure. Um.
Yes.
I would love to take part in those those meetings, since they've they've been quite um accepting of our of our community, and I've got quite a few contacts there, and I'm always looking for an opportunity to stop by and meet them, so.
Oh, we have you tasked as a lead role in in that, your worship, so.
Oh, perfect.
Yes.
Sounds good.
We'll have additional follow-up with that, and we're hoping to also have uh Prophet River First Nation potentially included as well.
Oh, good. Lovely. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, moving on to council calendars. So the next one, just stating May first. They're looking to make some adjustments to avoid disruptions associated with the billing cycle. That's the implementation of the new user fee schedule um regarding our water and stuff, right? So that's beginning as of May first. So just be aware that that's the big thing that's happening on that date. Yes, councillor Wall?
Uh regarding council calendars, I just want to ask, regarding NCLGA, that is the twelfth to the fifteenth of May.
Yes.
Um are we going?
Uh well, I think according to our policy that's in place, we'll be going off that policy, will we not, Mr. Sobolski?
Correct.
Yes.
And with the, with the, uh I believe the uh adjustments made to the um participation schedule, I believe you had switched up your worship uh attending UVCM for keeping it rural as well as avoiding attendance at FCM this year because of high costs and the impending deficit. We do have the ability to follow that policy.
Yes.
So we are going to NCLGA?
Yes.
Okay. I will write that in my calendar then, because that is next month.
Yes.
And our, or just one additional point of of interest, uh our resolution regarding the highway maintenance contracts and agreements is on, um it is on the agenda for discussion.
Yes.
Beautiful.
I know. Very happy. Wonderful. Okay, perfect. Yes.
Uh sorry, just to clarify to that point, for the NCLGA, there's um all five spots ready to go for the May?
Um what's in the policy? I think it's me and two others, is it not?
Yes, it is. It's a delegation of three, so it's it's the mayor as the lead delegate and then uh two corresponding delegates.
So what we'll we'll do is we will do what we always do. Um that will get added to the agenda. We'll see who wants to go based on who's gone previous years. And then if by chance councillor Johnston decides he's missing NCLGA and is desperate to go, he has not gone before, so he would get precedence over those who have already attended. So that's how we've done it in previous meetings, and so we'll be doing it going forward.
Will we, look, sorry, your worship, would we like that to be added to the um April fourteenth special agenda? Or special meeting agenda, or would we like that to be added to the twenty-third RCM?
Why don't you, you add that to the to the RCM on the twenty-third, because then we can just make that decision. That doesn't really need a large committee of the whole meeting, because it is something that comes up every year, so the discussion is annual. So we can bypass the committee of the whole, we can have that discussion during the regular council meeting. Yes.
Done.
My, my question on a point. Is there a timeframe for booking these hotels and things like that where we might be able to get admission cheaper before, with an early bird?
You know we're Airbnb-ing it, right?
Well, I know, I understand, like, you book earlier compared to later.
Yeah.
And with the admission, I know there's an early bird rate versus a later rate. I would, I would suggest putting it on them on Monday specials.
Well, I think according to the policy, you're supposed to pre-book those spots. And that's if the policy was in place for so that you don't have to wait for a resolution from this body. Is that correct? Yep.
Oh.
That's why we did the policy.
Well, obviously, I wasn't paying attention.
Obviously, I'm a genius. Yeah. Okay, perfect. So we're all, all good. Um do you need a a formal vote on that request for that, Mr. Sobolski?
Uh it it's going off a policy, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, perfect. We're gonna move on to council calendars. So councillor Johnston, what you been up to?
Uh actually, I'm sorry, I missed our open house. I had to run down to Edmonton. Uh my first meeting with the museum is tomorrow night, so next week I'll have something.
Yeah, very exciting. I'm excited. I'm excited for you to check in with us. You've known those then probably since you were like two, so, yeah. Okay, perfect. Wonderful. I look forward to hearing about it. Councillor Ravel, what you been up to?
Um yeah, no, I was at that open house. Unfortunately, we had no members of the public attend, so um that's why we're always trying to extend those opportunities for folks to voice their input and concerns if they exist regarding, you know, our financial plan going forward. Um but anywhos, it was uh it was good to, you know, post it, always having good opportunities for public engagement. Well, Legion stuff, but um that's not exactly, like, that's not a portfolio of mine, but it's a supporting a community organization. Um but I'll leave that be, but.
Would you like to announce one of the next dinners?
I will defer to the member opposite if the member opposite so wishes to.
Member opposite? Like, I disagree with you?
That's parliamentary. That's just parliamentary.
Okay, that's fine.
So.
I think we disagree about me.
Don't worry, dear son.
Well, since you brought that up, um essentially, the stove at the Legion um has is no longer the best stove to use. It's reached the end of its life and it's becoming a, you know, a concern. So anyways, um the Legion has had to pivot, and so instead of the traditional schnitzel night this Friday, this Friday, the April eleventh, in, you know, two days, um we've had to pivot to a burger and salad night. And but the price will be dropped.
Oh no, I've got a buddy at work, he's just so hot. The schnitzel loves it. He's going Friday, yeah. I won't tell him.
No, 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 let him go. You know.
We have no stove. It has to be.
You can't say schnitzel, he's Filipino. We don't know how to do anything unless he says schnitzel.
But it's been good. It's been good to see all the community come together and support, and uh there's a lot of exciting things. So it's just um one of the community groups. Anyways, I will, the other portfolios, uh you know, we're getting introduced, uh and uh moving forward with that, but nothing to report as of yet.
Yeah, letters have begun being sent out. I think they were sent out end of last week, earlier this week, was it not?
They were sent out last week.
Yeah, wonderful. Okay, councillor Wall, what you been up to?
Boy, I attended a council meeting.
Oh, the special meeting today.
Yeah, the special meeting today. And. No, we're all there. Uh I also attended the meeting two weeks ago. Um I also attended the open house that nobody came to. Um either that means it worked very well or not well at all, or nobody knew. I don't know. But nobody was there, but I was at the open house. I I have been in contact with the South Peace Health Services Society. Um so Voltray's House was nearly at capacity in January, which is really good.
Wow.
Yes, so that that's really good. And they're doing a campaign with posters, so I was gonna ask if I could put a poster uh just for information on what Voltray's House actually is and who can, anyone from the region that needs health services in the South Peace and Dossie Creek District Hospital. Um it could even be for something like eye surgery, you can't drive home, right? Things like that. It's okay if I put a poster up at the post, uh on the on the now that I'm halfway through. The bulletin board.
The one next to the post up? It's like the other side one?
Yeah, yeah.
That is open to the public. You can put anything you want up there.
Okay, didn't have to ask that then. That's great.
It's for the public to use.
So I I will do that. Uh their next meeting is on, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, so I will be attending that. And the stove at the Legion, our wonderful historic stove from nineteen forty-two
evidently.
has finally, I know, I know, I didn't think it was that old, but apparently it is, has reached the end of its lifespan. So we are looking to purchase a new stove. There's a general meeting for that on on Saturday. Um I hope whatever new stove we get lasts eighty-three years. I doubt it will. So yes, this Friday is going to be burgers, because we don't have a stove to cook the schnitzel. And it's a one-time thing though. It is a one-time thing.
You know, I'm thinking about going down burgers, and I love burgers.
Maybe if it works out well, maybe we'll do schnitzel one weekend, burgers the next.
Oh, I love burgers.
As long, and it won't give, wherever. We're not gonna complain with the seniors.
I've got burgers.
To raise.
And then the seniors' hall is next Friday.
Oh, yes. That's the next one.
Yes, it is.
That's very good, too.
Maybe.
Am I the liaison for seniors?
I don't know. I forget.
I think you are.
No.
You're maybe.
I was, and I could never make the meeting, so I was like.
I wasn't sure if I was and then I, and then I'm not, or if I wasn't and now I am.
I don't know.
Anyways, it's next Friday.
Perfect.
At the seniors' hall, I, all the usual fixings. It's gonna be beautiful. I know, and you don't have to be a senior to attend.
Nope.
I have, I have been there.
They always have homemade pie. Ugh.
Always, I know, and ham and potatoes and I usually, I usually have ham. I think it's roast beef, too.
Oh, everything.
It's everything. It's everything. It's good. Support the seniors' hall. It's fantastic. Wonderful. That's my report.
Thank you. Councillor Wall is away with notice. So maybe moving on to me, my weeks have been so weird. It's been feast or famine, but everybody is kind of finishing up their budget. So it's been a lot of administrative work. It's been super, super busy, so I've just been staying out of everybody's way because frankly, it's annoying if they're tripping over me. But um on April second, I did meet with um staff CAO and at a resident that had a few concerns. So I had a great meeting there, and then I did my weekly check-in with the CAO. I attended the school district fifty-nine budget meeting. Um very, very interesting. It was nice to see everyone from my old stomping grounds. So it's sort of like, you know, I get the old friends and and it was lovely. Um a few concerning things that definitely came up, um councillor Ravel um and CAO Sobolski definitely alluded to the the concern around population shifts. They are projecting quite a large decline. Um they've actually been facing year-over-year decline since twenty nineteen. Um and so it was very, very interesting. So I did get a copy of their budget, but I was definitely, I found the very first bit of it talking about um registration numbers, graduation rates, the most interesting. So I am gonna come in one of these days and scan that part and send it to you guys via email. Um because I only got one copy, because they only had oh so many of them. But um they are definitely showing that they are gonna be reaching record-low um enrollment rates by twenty twenty-seven. So that was definitely a little bit concerning. So we really need to keep pushing the peace, pushing the communities, um and just really focusing on creating uh ki- communities that are family-friendly um and that wanna get families to move here, really.
Uh spur of the moment question here, so I apologize for not being fully refined. Um is, do, also putting in a spot for it. Do you know whether or not it's just we have less children in the area, or is it that children in the area are not being enrolled in public schools?
So my understanding from what I got from from that is it ties into birth rates. So there's less children, there's less babies being born. Um.
Which is, it's interesting.
I think it's also kind of normal, right? Like, we often see that as we're going through economical downturns or recessions or there's always that ebb and flow of babies being born.
But when the, when, but however, if the economic turmoil or it gets.
It gets terrible, there's tons of babies.
There's tons of babies.
Nobody's miserable enough yet to be creating all the babies, but.
We're getting.
We are, we are getting there.
We have all said something.
Yeah, no, we are. I was just talking to Mr. Sobolski about that. I was like, oh, don't worry, we'll like meet peak recession and then there'll be tons of babies born, because we're all like sad and lonely.
And at home.
And at home, true.
Anyway, do a smile.
Okay, so there are just less children overall.
It appears that there's less children being born, yes. Um which definitely makes sense. I know more people that are in your age group that don't have children.
Cost of living.
Dude, so expensive.
Oh, the cost of living.
Yeah, totally get it. So I attended that. Um I then attended the public budget meeting at the Health at the Community Centre. I was sad to see that nobody came out. I'm on the fence of whether or not that's a good thing or a bad thing. They either didn't come out because we're killing it in the name of killing it, or um they just don't wanna talk to us. I have it really quite decided.
Well, they didn't come out because we're killing it.
Uh I like that they didn't come out because we're killing it. I'm just gonna be, to be honest, great job, guys. You're all just killing it, and that's why they didn't feel the need to come out. Hopefully, um you know, we will begin to see an uptick in in public engagement as we get into summer and start doing things like ten-at-a-day and those kinds of things. So um I am hopeful that we'll start getting them all out, all out again, so. Or not, if that doesn't happen, I'm gonna start locking them in the Legion during initial dinners and um doing impromptu budget meetings. What are they gonna do? Leave? I'll stand in front of the door. You know what? I just figure, wing it, you know what I mean?
I'm trying to get people in, not turn away.
I know. Nothing scarier than, let's talk about biopsies. They'll all leave.
When the mayors come to talk about biopsies, I'll get people in.
That's right.
Perfect.
Um and then April third, I met with Billy Joe regarding Mudfest in twenty twenty-four and um coming up to Mudfest in twenty twenty-five. We had a phenomenal conversation with with her. They're expecting this year's gonna be even bigger than last year. I did talk about some of the concerns that were definitely brought up regarding medics and security. And um a lot of it is just that usual rumor. They had a phenomenal year. They did have one uh one overdose that did take part there. Uh it was in a person's personal trailer. They were not actually within the the event area at that time. It has definitely been a very stressful situation for Billy. I could tell that is definitely a factor. She's. It has definitely been a very stressful situation for Billy, I could tell that that is definitely a factor, she's never had that happen before. But we are currently facing a drug crisis within our region, overdoses are happening sadly at a much higher rate than we would like to see them. And it was quite sad to see the impact that that has had to Billy, because she's never had that happen before. But overall, the event was extremely positive, well-rounded, they, they, there was no fights, everybody there was just generally happy. She's so excited to be hosting it for a second year, she said that the community was phenomenal, she was welcomed with, you know, smiles and, and, and greetings, and that she really does feel that, you know, this is one of the best regions, because everybody was just so lovely. And so with that, Mr. Sobolski, I know that she wrote out asking for a letter of support, and I just wanted to hold off until I met with her regarding those, those concerns. So could we please add that to the regular council meeting, coming up around the end of the month, please, for councilors to decide if they'd like to offer letters for it? Seconded by Councilor Wall, all those in favor of adding that? Throwing both hands in the air, that is, um, passed or whatever. Yeah, so awesome conversation, I, I'm offended for Billy, I'm not going to be here for Mudfest again for the second year. We do have a standing invitation, myself and all of council, I'm really welcome, she'd love to see you here. It is happening the Friday and Saturday after Canada Day, so please go, I cannot go, I'm so sad, but I'm going to the Calgary Stampede, which I think she's holding against me, I'm gonna be honest, because the best year, it's the same weekend as the Stampede.
So it's the fourth and fifth of July?
Yes, Mudfest is the fourth and fifth of July, please go check it out, party three times this time, because I'm not gonna be, gonna be there and have a ton of fun, and send me lots of pictures so I can be immensely jealous so Billy can remember my face. You'll make her so happy, because she wanted me to come so badly.
Choosing the stampede?
I know, I'm, I know, I'm not choosing the stampede, I'm brand having tickets to a concert at the Stampede, I do not choose favorite.
Call the band, move it.
But Billy is going to be coming and enjoying our Canada Day event, we talked to her about putting one of the mud trucks in as a float, and she's very interested in doing that.
Is it a monster truck?
I don't know, maybe, but she is also talking about attending Canada Day and wandering around, shake hands, meet people, and talk to them about Mudfest. So we are so excited, Billy's gonna come out, take part, we even joked about putting her in the dunking tank so all the annoyed neighbors can throw balls at her. I don't know if she can do it or not, but she was kind of down, yes, Councilor Ravel?
Um, I've been having some conversations with members of the public, and I've been, I've been whipping them into excitement, and they've been whipping me into excitement about Canada Day, and trying to.
Oh, I'm so excited, I'm hearing nothing but phenomenal things.
But to bolster it with what other community organizations and stuff can do, so who should, who's the point person for Canada Day, and how should they reach out to that person?
Our lovely office staff are definitely our point person, we do have one phenomenal Canada Day person who works in our office, and that's Ms. Layton, and she loves doing it, she's so much fun, and she does a phenomenal job, so tell them to phone the Village Office, and they'll either get Miss Green, or Miss Green and Layton, and they will point them in, in the right direction. Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing like such good things, but Canada, everybody I talk to, everybody's like kind of stoked. I ran into Danny Grant on Saturday, and he was like, Canada Day, he was hyped, so, yeah, I'm stoked.
Yeah, is it gonna be in the nap part, or whose part is it?
No, it's gonna be at the community center part, is that what it's called? The Coleman Nap Part?
Yeah, I believe so.
Is it Coleman? Yeah. I did not know that, you're all nodding, wow, I did.
It was in, it was in our, I, I learned that when we did our parks.
I did read it, I swear, um, yeah, so, look for the Mudfest asking for a letter of support, that'll be coming in the next regular council meeting. April eighth, that ended the fire chief and the CAO regarding grant funding for future expansions and, and additional emergency order extensions for emergency services building, at this point in time, we have not really found anything, but I think that has a lot to do with the political climate. We are seeing far less federal and provincial grants than we ever have, it does not mean that it's dead in the water, it just means at this point in time, we're gonna pause, we're gonna pump the brakes on the conversation, and come back to it in spring of twenty twenty-six, when the climate politically has sort of stabilized. That'll give us a much better idea, in the meantime, we do have a lot of people, we have VCM lands looking for grants, like the Peace River Regional District, we have our staff here at, at the Village Office, we even actually have Jerry Lynn from UVCM, she's got her here to the ground as well.
Wonderful.
So we do have quite a few contacts that are keeping word and ears to the ground, looking for larger grants. Sadly, I don't know if we'll ever find a grant as large as the one that was available in twenty nineteen, but we can cross all of our fingers and toes. And then I, once again, left that meeting, came over here, met with my staff for my weekly check-in, because I knew our CAO was leaving, so I had to bug him and give him fifteen million more things to add to his list before he left. Mm-hmm, 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 so, that is what I've been up to, I will copy of cases and email it to you as I normally do, and then you'll have it. And I was gonna report on the PRD thing, but I haven't done anything since the March twentieth meeting, I go to my next meeting tomorrow, so you'll hear about that at the regular council meeting. That is where I'm at, so, question period, nobody is here, so we're gonna move into in camera, as per section ninety-one of the Community Charter, G litigation and K negotiations-related discussions respecting the proposed provisions of the municipal services that are in their preliminary stages. Seconded by Councilor Wall, all those in favor? Okay, we're gonna do, we wanna take a ten-minute break?
I have a question.
Oh, what?
My question.
Hang on.
Is our, is our bylaw to motion to continue past nine-thirty or ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock.
Okay.
Never mind, yeah.
We're all back for more.
We're gonna take a ten-minute break.